Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Meeks, what can you see?
Actually, I see your Facebook page.
Right, well, it's the, it should be the cities.
Yeah, it is. You're live, go ahead.
All right, so we're live on Facebook and we're recording. This is March 2020 Finance Meeting.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Vicki, you want to start, or you want me to start?
If you would, go ahead and start with the hospital.
Okay. Because of and during the COVID-19 pandemic, the hospital has asked our permission to defer three months' payments and then revisit that, see what kind of situation they're in after three months. And I thought that was a great idea, so we need your permission to do so.
So moved.
I agree.
Okay, just, why don't we take a vote, a formal vote, since we're doing this situation and we'll have it on record? Would you mind calling the roll? Absolutely. Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wigley?
Yes.
And Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Mr. Berrio. Do you need anything else, or do you want to make any comments?
No. Do y'all need me for the economic war chest issue with that community development spot grant?
We could discuss that also. We can do that. Do you want to talk about that, or you want me to?
Well, I guess I could, I can do a little bit of talking about, you know, some of the background or the foundation behind all this. So, you know, our financial issues have been well documented, well publicized. Some of, some of those issues were in our control, but a lot of them weren't in our control. I can tell you, we worked really hard, can't breathe it. We've seen significant improvement. As a matter of fact, sitting here today, we're in the best cash position we've been in in quite some time. But then March 11th happened, and we got our first coronavirus patient from the state of Arkansas. And what we experienced after that is similar to what all hospitals in Arkansas are experiencing. And that is, people, people limited access to our facility to come back, combined with the fact that people are trying to, you know, minimize their risk and not be exposed to this virus. They're limiting, you know, places that they're going and hospitals are, like, some of those places they'd like to avoid. So what we've seen is our revenue, our revenue dropped about 50% since March 11th. And in our business, we just paid, for the work we do today, we'll start seeing that money roll in in about two months. It takes about two months to feel that effect. And so we've been trying to work with our delegation up in Washington, as well as our representatives here in the state of Arkansas and our local governments to try to figure out, and even our vendors, we've asked our vendors to do some neat things with us. And everybody has, you know, helped us out, and we really appreciate it. There's some opportunities for us to shore up our financial picture through the federal bill that was just passed, the CARES Act. And so my goal, and what I'm trying to do is, we believe we're going to see a peak in probably four weeks. Three to four weeks, something like that. Hopefully, it's two weeks, and it's a small peak. But we think we're going to see a peak in the coming weeks. And what I didn't want for us to be trying to get people well and keep people healthy and fight this virus, and while at the same time, they're worrying about cash. So a lot of the stuff that's out there is going to be really useful for us, and I'm very excited about it. One of them was this community development slot grant that I, one of my, we here at work on, and he was working on it with us, Nita and Nita McDaniel. So that's one option for us. There's, there's three other options through the CARES Act that we're looking at that will be real helpful. And anyway, that's, that's kind of the background and that's information. And if anybody has any questions about that, I'd be happy to.
And we, I just like to say, we committed to potential $20,000 in support of that grant.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you. We all look at, yes, sir.
Will there be others that are putting forward money for that grant? Application?
That was discussed. Sitting here right now, I'm not sure. As a matter of fact, I'm not even sure how much we'd be able to tap into from that. But, you know, from our vantage point, we're thinking about this, if there's an opportunity for us to get grant money, or there's an opportunity for interest-free loans or anything else, let's go get it and make every effort to do so.
Yeah, no, I, we all discussed, and I think are in support of it. I was just curious if there was more money that would be needed for that grant application.
That I don't know. You know, the last, the last bit of information that I received on that grant, there's, generally, those grants require several resolutions. And the application was being amended so that those resolutions weren't required, so that process could move more timely. And to my knowledge, I don't think that application has been released yet with those resolutions being clogged out of.
That's okay. I just, I was curious.
As for the, as for the armory, we went out there today and we took measurements, and we're looking at it as a surge or as a potential place to handle surge capacity. I don't anticipate that, I can't imagine we'd be taking care of coronavirus patients from there. But, you know, some, some of the patients that don't have the illness, we may be in there, or we may be using that space for them. We're trying to get creative with what we can do to increase the number of hospital beds in Arkansas.
And I appreciate you clinging ahead. That's very important, I think.
We think right now, without the armory, we think we can get somewhere between 80 to 110 beds. I was on a call with the governor of the Department of Health the other day, along with all the other hospitals around the state. And they told us to expand capacity as best you can, and don't worry about getting approvals or going through any kind of process, just do it. And so that's what we're trying to do, is figure out how many beds can we get, so we can take care of patients that might need us.
Well, I hope we don't need them. But I'm certainly glad we have our hospital that provides a huge service to our part of the country, part of the state. And we'd be in trouble without it, so I'm thankful for your service and thankful for all the physicians and nurses and all the staff that work out there, and appreciative of what they do during all this.
Thank y'all very much. I appreciate it. And we all appreciate the support.
You are welcome. Anybody else have any questions or comments that they'd like to speak with Mr. Berrio about? Okay. Well, thank you, Scott. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, or we understand if you'd like to go home and eat. Thank you. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, Ms. Vicki?
Okay, the one thing that I have for the finance meeting tonight is an update on the funding for the property cleanup. And do you all have your agenda there with the information on it? I'm just going to read through this and kind of give you a timeline. On March the 9th of 2016, the Property Cleanup Fund checking account was opened with $20,000 from one cent sales tax. The checking account had been operating on that fund allocation through January the 29th of 2020. And that's when the general fund loaned the property cleanup fund the $3,500 to cover the two house demolitions that we talked about a couple of months ago. And according to our system, we have an open invoice outstanding balance of $27,795.45 for property invoices that have been billed. We're currently in the process of reconciling that report back to the system to see if something's been paid for that actually needs to drop off of that. And I've been communicating with Brian in reconciling the city records to his balance. And he has all the detailed information on where any of the properties might be in the legal process that we talked about earlier. And then when our current separation situation happened, it's been kind of hard for he and I to get together to, you know, compare notes. But we are in the process, that's where we are in that process. So if, prior to March of 2016, the cleanups were paid directly out of one cent sales tax. It was part of the, I believe it was under economic development. So that's kind of that history as to that funding. So it would just be up to you if you want to allocate, look into allocating some more money. Do you want to wait and see where we are in this process, in the legal process? And decide how you want to move forward. Any questions? Comments? Suggestions? Anybody?
Yeah, I think it looks good, Vicki. Good job.
Okay. So do you want to wait and look at, at the April, talk at the April Finance Meeting about whether to allocate some more funding? Maybe I could have Brian on here with me at that meeting with a little more information as to where we are in the legal processes. You want me to do that?
I think we wait till then.
Okay. Okay, but I just wanted to let you know where we were and what the funding, how it could kind of flow. Okay? And that's all we have for the finance meeting.
Thanks, Vicki.
Mr. Wigley, you have something?
Yes, Vicki. In April, and we readdressed this, and possibly giving some more funding to it, and Brian's going to be at the meeting. Mentioned to Brian so that we can, he can let us know kind of what that additional funding, how it would have, how much more we'd be able to get done if we had the additional funding.
Okay. Okay, I sure will. I'll have him at that, when we have the next one, I'll have him here, and we'll have some more information for you.
And I think it'll be important to know, too, where we are in the legal process, which is, I know what you said, so.
Exactly.
You know, if we, if we know where we are, then we, it will be easier to decide how much more funding, or if any at all.
Okay. All right. We'll do that. We'll set that up. Okay. That's all we have.
Motion to adjourn.
You're welcome.
All those in favor? Okay. And it is 6:01. No, 6:02. So, y'all ready? We'll go ahead and call the council meeting to order. Ms. Hilton, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Cedric Leonard?
Michael James?
Here.
Al Pierre?
Here.
Jack Lassiter?
Here.
Craig McCray?
Here.
Mike Wigley?
Here.
And Claudia Hartness?
Here.
Okay. Michael James has agreed to give our invocation tonight, so I'm going to stand. And while he does that, and then I'm going to remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. For gracious Father, we come to you this day to seek your will and to pray, Father, for our, our country, for our town, for our friends, for our loved ones, Father, to give us strength during this time that we are facing. We just pray that we come together and that we help each other in any way that we possibly can. We just pray, Father, that you will bless us and continue to lead us. These things were lifted up to you in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
We're just stands.
Okay, we got an amen from the committee. All right. Okay, we did not have the minutes ready, so we'll approve those in April's meeting. Is there any unfinished business that anybody knows of? Okay, then we'll go on to new business. The first item on the agenda is, are our audit findings. Vicki, are you going to, no, I'm going to do this, aren't I? Our audit findings, I'm going to do this. Right? Okay. I'm going to read. There were two findings, and I'll read those to you. City personnel informed us, and we verified that $1,042 in revenue from the sale of scrap metal was used to pay for two holiday dinners for employees in violation of the public purpose doctrine in Arkansas Constitution, Article 12.5. Number two was the city entered into a contract with Monticello Economic Industrial Development Commission, Inc., MEDC, for promoting and assisting in economic growth and development in Monticello and the surrounding area. The city paid utilities that were unrelated to the city and not included in the contract between the two parties in apparent conflict with the public purpose doctrine in Arkansas Constitutional Article 12.5 as interpreted by Attorney General Number 1992-099. A similar finding was issued in the prior report. So, those were answered by me. And I said, "The monies from the sale of scrap metal were used to pay for two holiday parties for employee dinners. We will no longer use the monies from any city source to fund holiday meals. The plan for the next year is to have every employee who wishes to participate put $5 a month in, and we will use those funds to have any kind of holiday party or meal." The MEDC, when the city entered into a contract with MEDC for promoting and assisting in economic growth and development in Monticello and the surrounding area, the city paid utilities that were unrelated to the city and not included in the contract between the two parties in apparent conflict with the public purpose doctrine. A similar finding was issued in the prior report. Apparently, we sought legal advice last year, but our attorney's response was not suitable. So we sought the same legal advice again. City of Monticello attorney will draft a lease agreement for MEDC and the city of Monticello. It will outline specifically the cost of leasing the portion of the city-owned building that they occupy, and they will pay an appropriate portion of the utilities used by MEDC. And then I wrote, "Please understand that this building is used by the city and MEDC and lots of other city and county groups who need a place to meet at no charge. The building flooded last spring and has not been occupied since that time. It will not be repaired for several months." If I have any questions about the findings on the city.
Looks pretty good.
Thank you. I thought appropriately.
Okay. Julie Watkins is here to talk about the findings for District Court. And I think y'all can see her, maybe, I hope. She's in Vicki's little square.
Findings, and my answer's in front of y'all, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so I'm just going to read them to you. This first one, it starts out, "The first bullet point stated that there was a balance remaining in the bank account of $9,006 that was not properly identified with the receipt numbers for cases not yet adjudicated and payments on all unpaid time accounts." And the paragraph below that, it states that there was a issue with the database and the programming with virtual justice. That was an error in my part. It is not, this issue will not come up until the 2019 audit. The remaining amount of $9,006 was still in there because I did not disperse it till January of 2019. So that's why it was still a remaining balance, but it has been dispersed where it needed to go. And then it says, "The second bullet point stated that the actual bank deposits and withdrawals are not being reconciled with virtual justice records." It says, "Our deposits match with our bank, bank statements and Quick Book records. Our office will make sure that all receipts that are deposited in the bank account for the month that we received it." So just like today was the last day of the month, I made sure all the money was in the bank, so it will match. And then it says, "Third bullet point stated that the credit card receipts were not reconciled with the deposits made. Our office policy is that we reconcile each credit card deposit the day after we receive the email stating that the defendant has paid. We received the email with the amount of the name and of the defendant. Then we post the payment to the defendant. We print the receipt for the payment. We keep all credit card receipts together until the next day when we receive the deposit email. We then reconcile the receipts with the deposit email to make sure that the correct amount was entered on the correct defendant. It has been emphasized that the court staff to double-check their work and to do it in a timely manner. At the end of each month, when I reconcile our books, I check all credit card deposits that are on our bank statement to all the emails stating how much we deposited in the total, how much each defendant had paid, and the defendant's name. The last bullet point stated that the non-monetary credit adjustment of $215, which reduced the amount of fines, fees and costs due from the defendant. No documentation authorizing this adjustment was provided." This is the same thing we got wrote up for the year before, stating that when we get, like, refunds or people overpay, like, their fine payment was 200 or 190, and they send in a check for 200, I've got to go in there and I've got to up it to receipt the money, so it will go somewhere. And then I go in and I lower that back down to 190, and that will show a refund. And they keep saying that I do it without the judge's approval, even though he signs off on every single reimbursement refund I do. But they said still that I am changing the docket amount, even though the judge signs off on it, they're still going to write me up for it. So that $215 was when we got her tax money. And I went in there and I applied it to her account, then I had to refund her money. And that's what they are saying that we shouldn't do. We should do a paper receipt. And that is, well, the next paragraph talks about the, without the judge's approval, which I just discussed. And then the last paragraph, it talks about the manual receipts and how the judge does not want to do manual receipts. And it says, "I've checked, checked with other courts, and all them handle refunds the way virtual justice recommends. When a defendant mails a money order to our office, the amount of the money order is higher than the amount of the changes. I go into virtual justice and I increase the fine amount to match the money order. This allows us to post the payment into virtual justice. I then bring the fine amount back down to its original amount. When I bring the fine back down to the original amount, that creates a refund. Our judge does not want us to do manual receipts. Our judge wants all payments and refunds to be traceable inside virtual justice. He does not want to have, to maintain a separate system for refunds to him that is just more chance of error or for information to be misplaced." Do y'all have any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. What procedure will we be using then to make that overpayment?
We are not going to use it. We're still going to do it the same way the judge and virtual justice has trained us and taught us in the past. We're still going to up the amount and then go back in and lower it to issue a refund.
You're just going to do an audit finding every year for that?
There will be an audit finding every year going forward?
Yes, sir. Yeah, because judge doesn't want to do manual receipts.
So what, if any, are the repercussions of that?
There's not. It seems all the other courts that I've contacted that use virtual justice, it seems that we are the only ones getting wrote up for this because every other clerk that I've contacted that uses virtual justice does it the same way I do it.
So the only difference is the auditor we use. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I just, the reason I asked the question about what kind of issues this will cause going forward is I don't want this small issue to become a big issue down the road in previous audits.
No, sir. I just left, what was it, the Legislative Audit Committee. I was there last month, and I explained this to them, too. And I don't know if they're going to talk to our auditor that does it, but I told them the same thing I just told y'all, that we do it the same way other courts do, but we are the only ones that get wrote up for it.
How good is that?
I'm sorry?
Were they good with it?
Yeah, they were fine with it. They didn't have any questions, and I pretty much told them I'd see them next year for the database era program, programming issue with virtual justice.
What was your question, Mr. Pierre?
She, I was going to ask how the auditors respond to that, the legislative auditor.
Vicki, this is Jack. We had a similar situation at the university, and we found that we could go to the next level and try to get them to explain to the auditor that this was something that other campuses and other people did, and that solved our problem.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's doable.
I'm sorry, with her going to the committee, you could follow up with that. You could follow up with that and see if anything's going to come from that, and if not, we can go to a different auditor.
And with our individual auditor, so he doesn't misunderstand, just, he needs to know, or she, I don't know who our auditor is, that you are going to go to the next level to see if it can be resolved, so it'd be consistent with what everybody else is doing.
Okay. Yeah, I can, yeah, I can do that. I can just let them know. And also, virtual justice, the lady that I speak to, she also said she was going to talk to our auditor about that.
Okay, good.
Let the record show that Mr. Leonard has gotten to the meeting. Hi, Cedric.
Welcome.
Yeah, I saw him.
Y'all have any other questions?
I don't. Thank you, Julie.
Right, thank y'all. Thank you.
Okay, I did leave something out when I was reporting ours. There is another matter. It says, "It came to our attention that from November 19th, 2018 through January 7th, 2019, an individual used city bank account information to process three unauthorized withdrawals totaling $6,974. Entity personnel initially discovered the unauthorized withdrawals upon reconciliation of the affected accounts, and the funds were recovered from the bank on February 7th and 11th, 2019." And I responded to that in our response to legislative audit. That we did discover the issue through normal bank reconciliation. We contacted a city detective, filed the necessary paperwork with the bank. We changed the kind of checks we used to be the most secure checks available, and 100% of those monies were returned to our account. So I forgot, I only read the mayor's stuff and forgot the rest of it, so. Apologies for that. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, they're going to move on to document, it should be document number five. That's resolution to authorize the use of street aid monies from RDOT. You've got the document in front of you, and then you should have.
Can everybody see it on the, on my shared screen? I have it pulled up.
Yes.
Ashley, do I have that resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Ashley, I only see a portion of it.
Okay.
Oh, I see, here it is. I see it. Okay, can I get someone to introduce that resolution, please?
I'll introduce it and move. We suspend the rules and read by title only.
Thank you, Meeks. Can I get, okay. Thank you, Ms. Meeks. Can I get, okay, will you call the roll, Jess? Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Oh, I've got some people muted, hang on.
Yes.
Cedric, okay. Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
And Claudia Hardness.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Barton, will you please read the resolution?
A resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Monticello utilize state aid, street monies for the following city project.
Okay, any questions?
Then Monticello overlay.
Any questions or comments? Everybody understand what this is?
This is Pope Street, Chapman Drive, Patton Drive overlay, right?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what this is.
Do you know when they're going to start on this?
Uh, it goes to bid in May. I think that's what I, I think that's what I read the other day. So it won't be long. Anybody have any questions? Okay, I got a motion and I'll have a second.
Second.
Okay, will you call the roll, Jess, please? Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre? Al Pierre? I think we lost Al.
I think we did too.
There he is, there he is. Al Pierre?
Yes.
Okay. Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
And Claudia Hardness?
Yes.
Okay, and resolution passes. All right, next is an ordinance affecting water rates. It should be document number six. Can I get someone to introduce this one?
I will.
Thank you.
I move, we suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Thank you. Jess, will you call the roll, please? Yep. Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
No.
Okay. Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
And Claudia Hardness?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get some? Can I get someone to read the, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Barton, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance further amending section two of ordinance number 493 and 770 of the City of Monticello as previously amended, establishing schedules of rates for charges to be paid for water supplied from the city's water system, declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes.
Okay, now I'm sure we have a lot of questions and lots of discussions, so who wants to go first?
I'll be glad to.
Okay.
On the right.
And Ashley, I don't know what's going on, but I cannot see the whole document. It just shows a very small portion of it. But I think.
I'm not really sure. I'm zoomed all the way out, so I'm not really.
I see it now. I see it now.
There you go. Whatever you're doing, you moved it up a little. Anyway.
Okay.
I think this is the, don't we have a statement in here that we will increase by 0.5% each year?
We do.
I personally don't think that's a good plan. I think that we have no way of predicting what we're going to need. Obviously, we've got a perfect example. We haven't looked at these rates, what, in 12 years or hadn't changed them in 12 years?
Since 2012.
And if we'd had something in there that it goes up a certain percent, we might be charging way more than we need to charge. I think the best plan is to have us to have a date by which we must review the water rates each year and then make any decision. And with, I would imagine that we would just amend the resolution when we might change these rates?
I'm not sure I fully understand your question, but clearly the rates can be changed at any time by the council.
Okay. I just hesitate to have an automatic 5.5% a year, not knowing, you know, what the future holds or whatever. But I do think we should have a statement to the effect that the council must review and confirm the rates every year by a certain date, if that's possible.
I would like to amend that a little bit and say that we have to have sewer rate study done. Especially as long as we can get it done without charge from Arkansas Rural Water Association, which is who did it this year. That was easy, required no effort on our part other than to get the numbers together. And it was extremely helpful.
Mayor? This is Joe. Did the Arkansas Rural Water Association recommend a yearly increase, automatic increase? Or did they give any recommendations in that regard?
Well, it's been so long since I've read the document, Joe, it's hard to really remember and answer that accurately. But it's, I do remember them stating that it's important to review them periodically. And annually is a really good way to start that.
The document I'm looking at, I do not see 0.5% increase annually on this.
It's item number G on the second page of the ordinance.
Okay, I overlooked it.
Well, this, this is the first reading, correct? We are going to table this and, okay.
I believe we should. I think it's important. I think we need to
Yes.
all read it, be really aware of what it says and how it affects us. And, and I mean, and I'm not, you know, I put numbers in here. I'm not married to these numbers. But we can, we can come to those figures jointly. I just, I put a four and a half percent increase on the base rate and a 2% increase on the number of gallons per thousand in excess of 2,000 gallons. And the real change is that, those two percentages. And then the fact that Arkansas Rural Water Association says it costs us a dollar, I think, $1.62 per 1,000 gallons to produce. We have been charging after the first, after the second tier, we have been charred and we've reduced the fee that we charge per 3,000 gallons to the point where we were selling water less than it costs us to produce it. And I don't think that's responsible for city citizens. I don't think it's responsible at all. So it's past time that we review this and increase them.
Mayor, I have a comment. I think it's important for everyone to understand, if they don't already, that obviously we hadn't had a water rate increase, sewer rate increase in a long time. And in the study that, that Michael James did, and I pointed out that we're a lot cheaper than towns of our size in our area of the state. Then I think that, if I'm wrong here, I think the Rural Water Association confirmed that, that we are much cheaper than anybody else.
Yes.
Compared to, at some point in time in the near future, that we address our revenue concerns, we're going to have a lot of other issues of not being able to pay for things.
Right. Well, and I'll read a, I'll read a paragraph from Arkansas Rural Water Association's study. It says, "But the one thing you need to remember is that a city cannot sell water for less than it costs them to produce it." Costs to produce 1,000 gallons of water is $1.62 per 1,000 gallons. And the city is selling 1,000 gallons of water after the first 5,000 for $1.38 per 1,000 gallons. So I mean, that, there's, that's, that's it. Anybody else?
Mayor, are any of our contracts with the outlined water associations or any of those USDA involved contracts?
That is the one thing I forgot to check. I did check all their rates. And the lowest Arcata Green Hill was $13 for the first 1,000 gallons and $3 per 1,000 gallons after that first 1,000. That's the least expensive amount of water sold out of all of our associations.
And we're selling it at what rate?
We were selling it 1150 for the first 2,000 gallons.
And then after that?
It was
$1.76.
And then it went down to what? Craig, have you got it? In your hand?
Looks like after 2,000 gallons, it's $1.76.
Then it went down again. After 3,000 gallons or, or the next 3,000 gallons, I think it was Rural Water Association said it, Rural Water Association said after the first 5,000 gallons, it was $1.38 per 1,000 gallons. We tiered it. And with every 2,000 or 3,000 gallons, we decreased the fee again. And it was to the point where it was, we were selling it for less than it costs us to produce. And the, and the deficit in those other tiers and those lower tiers, which we don't, there's not a tremendous amount of that. But that amount of deficit would have wiped out some of the profit we were making on the higher tiers because the difference between what it was costing and what we were selling it for wasn't that much.
Mayor, I have a question. On the form I'm looking at, I see rates that are associated with water associations. And then I see rates that are associated with proposed industrial. So on the water association, it says our current rate structure gallon wise is 0 to 650,000.
That's for industrial?
No, it says water associations. And it says the rate's 98 cents.
We were selling water for 98 cents per 1,000 gallons to the water associations.
Right, but I was giving you the breakdown on the tiers. It's 0 to 650,000. And then the next, is the next 200,000.
For industrial?
No, water associations.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Sorry.
No, it's okay. So. It says it's 98 cents for the first, up to the 650,000.
Per 1,000 gallons.
Right, and then the next 200,000, it says it's $1.15. Is that, is that in agreement?
I, I never saw the $1.15. I don't know what you're looking at. Oh, I see it. No, no, no.
I don't remember seeing it.
Yeah, I'm looking at the paper that I think Michael gave this to us.
Yeah, I passed those out last month and the first column on.
Okay, I see it. I see it. I see. I see it.
Says, that says current rates. So that's what I was looking at.
Okay. Well, again, none of those fees are even equal what it costs us to produce.
Right. Well, I mean, I, I think your proposal at four and a half percent or whatever, I view it as very modest. I mean, I think initially we were looking at trying to bridge, you know, the gap that we have in our funding over a period of, I think, about seven years. I think what you proposed is, I think, modest.
I agree. And it may, and it may be too modest, which is why I said I'm not married to these numbers. There, there is.
Well, if nothing else, it's at least a start. And then we could set a date next year to review. And then in addition to changing the rates, we're also, if I'm reading this right, changing the way in which it will be billed. In other words, eliminating most of these tiers and it's going to be just two tiers. Is that right?
Yeah, we're eliminating all the tiers.
So it may be wise and prudent to have a year under this new form to get some type of basis to compare against and then review it next year to see what further action maybe we should do.
Well, that was exactly my thought process, that there was no reason or to increase it a large amount until we know how it's really going to affect us. And whether or not it's going to make a positive difference. And I, I mean, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think there's any way it can't make a positive difference. It's going to make a positive difference. But how much of a difference is, has yet to be seen.
Paige? Jack here with one more question. Our new policy on sprinkler systems will be charging monthly. They'll be reading monthly. Where in the past, it was a period of time over the entire year.
Right.
So I'm assuming the same rates will go on the sprinkler system?
Yes. Now, we're not going to charge a base rate on sprinkler systems every month. I don't, I don't think that's.
Right. But I wonder if this needs to be included in our resolution?
It can be.
I would think it clarifies the matter.
So Dr. Lassiter, would you like to amend the resolution, item G, instead of having the rates will increase by 0.5% annually to reflect?
That would be my preference in that we set and, again, I'm not privy of what should be the exact date, but there should be a date which we must have reviewed or done our study and confirm or change the rates each and every year.
So if there needs to actually have a date, why don't we just go back, set a date and change it, I mean, and review it rather than amending the agenda? Just take G off completely?
Well, you could replace G. You could replace G with review annual rates by July 31st or whatever.
Well, I, and I would offer this as a suggestion. I think with the timetable we're on, unless it changes, we won't put the new rates in effect, Paige, until what, June 1?
Yeah, if we read this March, April, and May, then the new rates would go into effect June 1.
And maybe that would be the date that we would use annually, that by June 1, we must have reviewed and taken, if nothing, just confirm the rates that will continue or if rates need to be changed.
Yeah, May, May 1, that way to go into effect June 1. Just like this one will go effect. We can review it May, in our May meeting.
Well, if, if you review it in May, you're going to have to read it three times. You need to read it three times before it goes into effect. So you need, need to have the resolution ready to be read for the first time April to go into effect June.
I think that's correct. Of course, it's the council's business. But if you're wanting to have these rates in effect on June 1 of each year, then the review needs to be completed by.
Sometime in the first quarter.
Really? Yeah, by March, March 1 or March 15, so that they can read the first time at the March meeting. Basically, the same, same cycle that you're on right now.
Right. Okay, and we'll add, we'll do, I'll do a little bit of more specific research and we'll figure out how to exactly do sprinkler systems and we'll add that in here.
Okay.
Now, if I pass something on your sprinkler system, what do you mean?
Well, in the past, it's Well, in the past, it's, it's mostly about how they've been billed. They've only been billed one time a year. And it's, if I'm not mistaken, it's at the end of the summer season.
We're talking line sprinklers?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if a person had a sprinkler system, they got billed in October and they paid their bill, they may, next year, they may get a bill for four times that amount because at some point during the year that I got a, they had a leak on their water line and didn't know it. And we didn't know it because we weren't monitoring that. So, if we monitor, if we, if we bill those more regularly, then we'll know if there's a problem and we can notify the homeowner, they can take care of it beca- before it becomes a nine thousand dollar bill. I mean, we literally had a four thousand dollar bill somebody had this year. We always have, we've had several of those.
How's that actually set up?
How's it, the billing setup?
Yes, I mean, it's the same meter, I mean, or is it...
No, it's a different meter.
It's a separate meter.
Okay.
It's a different, you can choose, if you are, if you have a pool, yeah, if you have a pool or a sprinkler system, you can choose to put those on a separate meter or you can leave them on your house meter. It's, it's the homeowner's choice. But if you put them on a, a separate meter, they're only read one time a year.
Well, and the, the main purpose for putting them on a separate meter is so that you're not charged the sewer rate because the...
And trash.
And trash.
Right, so that would be the benefit if you were a homeowner to putting them on a separate meter.
If they're on the same meter?
Then you're paying, if they're on the same, and my, my pool and my sprinkler system are on the same meter as my water in my house, okay? And I chose to do that because I just didn't want to go to the trouble of putting in a new meter. That, that was mine and Tim's decision. So, every year when I fill up my pool or I sprinkle my lawn, I pay water and sewer and trash on both of those extra two items.
But the rates are so low, they don't affect you that much, do they?
The rates are so low, it's not a problem. Not a problem.
You, you might be going to a separate meter.
I might be. It might be more cost-effective and I will do that.
So, is that meter, one meter being, are those meters being charged at the same rate for you as house meters?
Yes.
Except for the base rate.
Except for the base rate.
Yeah.
They're not charged a base rate because they're not, they're probably not using two thousand gallons. Well, they may be. It just depends on the lawn and the sprinkler, you know, it depends.
We're not selling that water cheaper than what it costs to produce it then. In other words, just like we were talking about with the water association.
Say that again, Mr. Leonard.
We're not selling it cheaper than it is to produce it, right?
Yes, we have been. Yes.
We have three months to look into this.
Okay. Well, the, for the first two thousand gallons, they don't get charged that base rate. The next tier, they've been charged, uh, a dollar seventy-six.
That's correct, dollar seventy-six.
And then the next tier was a dollar thirty-eight. That's cheaper than it costs us to produce it. That is five thousand and one gallons to twenty thousand gallons. That make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, but we wanted to bring all this on the same level, right?
Yes.
And if we amend it or put in the sprinkler system, then we still have two months to look at it and talk about it and...
Right.
Well, I, I think sprinkler system meter rate should be discussed in this ordinance as well, so...
I agree. Well, how, do y'all want to, I mean, do you want to do it at the summer, as the first tier or the only tier that we have or how, I mean, are you, what are, what are your ideas about it?
Well, I mean, I, I can't see charging them the, the minimum amount. We need to charge them for actual usage, I think.
I agree.
Yes.
So, so if, personally, you know, if the zero to two thousand is twelve dollars and two thousand one to five thousand is a dollar seventy-six, just charge them the dollar seventy-six for zero to five thousand or whatever the new rate is, is a dollar eighty.
It's, but it's per thousand gallons, not for five thousand gallons.
What do we charge them, what do we charge them right now?
We're charging them a dollar seventy-six per...
Per thousand gallons up to five thousand gallons. If, if I've got a sprinkler system right now and I use three thousand gallons, I'm getting charged a dollar seventy-six per, per thousand gallons.
Yes.
That's the way I read it.
Yes.
Okay, so, under the new system, under the new rates, they would be charged a dollar eighty instead of a dollar seventy-six?
Right.
With, with no minimum?
Right.
Okay.
But the meter will be read monthly or it is now instead of once a year.
Right. So, so when you're using your sprinkler system, you'll get a separate bill for that amount every month that you use it.
Yep.
And when you turn the system completely off, you will not have a bill.
Right. Unless you have a leak.
Right. And that's the whole purpose is to bring up, yeah.
Right.
And to make it consistent in rates.
Yeah, and we're also obligated to report a water loss, uh, in gallons every year to the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. And we just, literally, I think I signed that yesterday. So, if we're losing water like that, even if it is in somebody's sprinkler system, we need, the city needs to know in addition to the homeowner. So that we can add that to our water loss rate.
Paige, do you need motions to, to add these things or are you just going to add them and present it at the next reading?
I think I'm just going to add them and present it at the next meeting. Is that okay, Mr. Barton? I think so.
Sure, if all we were doing was the G, we could do that readily, that's simple enough. But with the, with the addition of the, of the bulk homeowner, the, this pool and the sprinkler systems, that's going to be more complicated. So, we may as well just deal with that and have it ready for the council's consideration next month without an amendment. Now, I'm not sure we're completely ready to focus on an amendment on the sprinklers and the pool with the specificity we would need to do an amendment. So, I think we would present it for reconsideration, uh, with those changes.
I agree.
Sounds great.
So, we're going to table this discussion until next month. Is that correct?
So moved.
Yes.
Second question. Will you call the roll, Jess, please?
Yep. Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hartness.
She's muted, Ashley. Will you call her name again, Jess, and let her vote?
Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, the next item is a resolution, um, supporting the House Joint Resolution for the half percent sales tax for roads. Can I get someone to introduce the resolution, please?
I will.
Thank you, ma'am. Second?
Second.
I move, we suspend the rules, read by title only.
Thank you, Ms. Meeks. Thank you. Uh, Jess, will you call the roll?
She's...
Jess is muted.
I'm not, I didn't mute her.
There you go.
Okay, sorry. All right, um, Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Um, Mr. Barton, will you place rates resolution?
A resolution by the City of Monticello, supporting the House Joint Resolution 101A of 2019, HJR 101A of 2019, proposing an amendment to the Arkansas Constitution to continue a levy of a one-half cent sales and use tax for state highways and bridges, county roads, bridges and other surface transportation and the retirement of the bonds authorized in Arkansas Constitution Amendment 91, a special revenue to be distributed under the Arkansas Highway Revenue Distribution Law.
Any questions or concerns?
Move, we accept the resolution.
Second.
Jess, will you call the roll, please? And you're muted again.
Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Thank you again. Next item is a resolution approving an amendment to the 2020 sales and use tax. Um, can I get someone to introduce this one?
I will.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, second?
Second.
Mr. Barton, will you place rates resolution?
A resolution approving amendment to City of Monticello Sales and Use Tax Budget for 2020.
We didn't get the clause to read by title only. We, we finished reading it.
Well, well, you picked a good one.
Yeah.
Whereas there are additional expenses related to the repair of the City of, of City of Monticello Swimming Pool at City Park to be paid from sales and use tax, which require an amendment to the sales and use tax budget for 2020, whereas that is additionally, that is additional expense in the amount of nineteen thousand fifty dollars and fifty-five cents for additional repairs to the pool, which was reasonably anticipated at the, which was not reasonably anticipated from time of the original repair agreement with Burton Pools and Spas, and that's amount is nineteen thousand fifty dollars and fifty-five cents. It is therefore by the City of Monticello, City Council resolved as follows that the sales and use tax budget line item sixty forty two to be amended, to be increased by twenty thousand dollars to a new amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Two hundred and sixty-five, five hundred thousand.
Two hundred and sixty-five.
Two hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred.
That's correct.
Okay. Do y'all understand what all happened?
Explain it again, Paige.
Okay, leak detectors came, they pressurized the lines, they marked all the leaks that they thought we had. Um, we, Burton Pools and Spas bid the job, they were the only bidder that we had, they dug up all those locations, repaired those leaks, we had leak detectors come back, pressurized the lines again, and we blew out a lot of more, a lot more, uh, leaks. And Burton Pools and Spas thinks that the reason those blew out, one of the reasons they blew out is because the, uh, the voids were not filled properly with the proper kind of fill material. So, it's supposed to be filled with washed rock, not gray rock, not concrete chips. Um, so, when, when they filled it with improper material and then, and then poured concrete over it again, the weight was too much for the newly repaired lines and so they blew out as well as some other older places that were, uh, just all pipe. So, we've marked all of those and, um, want permission to spend that extra money to repair those and properly fill these voids with washed rock and so that they have a bed to sit on that, that will help them, uh, maintain or, uh, deal with the weight of the concrete on that board. Does that make sense?
Yes, the, the fill material that was put in there improperly, was that us or Burton Pool?
Now, that was the previous repair that was done five years ago. Vicky, if you're still on here, you might know that, you might can look that up. I'm not sure how long ago it was done.
What was the question?
How long ago those, uh, the last pool repairs were made?
And who made them?
Okay, let me look and see.
It was not Burton Pools and Spas.
Okay.
So, there's no repairs?
Uh, probably not.
So, did I understand you say that some of the newly repaired lines blew out again?
Well, yes, but I, when I say newly repaired lines, I'm talking about the last repair that was done five, ten years ago, how, however long ago it was. Not the ones that were recently in this, in this project, not those.
Okay.
That, when we pressurized those lines, we had other leaks appear. The leaks that, that Burton Pools and Spas have fixed are, are still solid.
Okay.
And they, they assured me that they would fill it with proper material this time and when the concrete was poured, these repairs would hold. Um, and they, they went so far as to say, now, they didn't write it down, but they went so far as to say is you're not going to have any problem with this pool for another thirty years. And I said, well...
We'll see about that.
Standing right.
That's what I said. I said, well, that's the best news I've heard since I've been alive, but, you know. And, and we're, we're, we're still not going to have every single plumbing line around that pool repaired, but a significant amount. And I'm, I'd like, especially since we can't swim, to pressurize the lines again and see what happens and if we get more leaks, I'd like to call leak detectors back. I mean, I just don't see the point of, we're in the middle of a pandemic, we can't swim, we can't gather, might as well fix it, if we're going to do it. You know, I don't realize it could go on and on and on and on and on forever and I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to do that, but it's the only pool the city has, so... So, right now, we need your approval to spend an additional twenty thousand dollars to get these new, newly discovered leaks fixed.
Move, adopt the resolution.
Say that again, somebody.
Is the warranty off the last repair?
Yes, I believe so. Vicky's looking to see who did it this time and when it was, but I'm, I'm sure it is.
I started in, I can go back to 2011 on this system, so that's what I'm trying to look at here.
I move, we approve these additional expenses to complete the repairs to our city pool.
Second, Mr. Craig. Thank you. Okay, Jess, will you call the roll?
Yes. Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard? Cedric?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Okay, Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
And Claudia Hartness?
Yes. Um, I just found on here that in November of 2014, a company came and performed some leak detection at the pool.
Now, that was leak detectors and we ended up getting, getting them fixed, but I don't remember what company won the bid.
So, it'll be after that.
Yeah, it would be after. Um, I'll keep looking.
Okay.
And if, if I find it, I'll, um, I'll, at the end of the meeting, I'll tell you what it is.
All right, I, I want to be clear that that resolution that we just passed is a resolution approving amendment to City of Monticello Use and Sales Tax Budget for 2020. approving amendment to City of Monticello's use and sales tax budget for 2020.
Yes.
Because the next item on the agenda, redocument number nine, is resolution authorizing additional repairs to the Timdey Chase Municipal Swimming Pool.
I move we waive the requirement and read only.
By title only?
Title only.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Jess, will you call the roll? Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions?
Move, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Jess, will you call the roll? Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
And Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Okay. That resolution passes. So, next item on the agenda is ordinance to amend ordinance 356 and 735 schedule rates for sewer. Can I get someone to introduce this one?
I will.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
And read by title only.
Thank you, sir. Jess, will you call the roll? Absolutely. Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you all.
You ready for me to read, Mayor?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Am I?
Oh, yes, I am. Yes, I am. Yes.
An ordinance further, an ordinance further amending ordinance number 356 to the City of Monticello is previously amended, and ordinance number 735 establishing a schedule of charges to be made and collected for facilities afforded and services rendered by the sewer system of the City of Monticello, declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes.
All right, awesome. Any questions? Conversation? Can I maybe start by telling y'all, Arkansas Rural Water Association, they did their, our study, rate study findings show that a cost of sewer treatment of 1,000 gallons is $1.68 per 1,000 gallons. And we we were charging $1,150 up to 2,000 gallons. The next 18,000 gallons, we were charging $1.19. And after that, it went down to 92, and then 300,000 gallons, 55 cents. And my proposal is that we leave the base rate the same. We don't have to increase that first 2,000 gallons. But we increase, we get, do away with the tier, and we increase by to $1.76. And that's what Arkansas Rural Water Association's recommendation was. My recommendation would be to do away with $1.31 per 1,000 gallons and charge, it says $1.75 per 1,000, for all over 2,000 gallons.
Well, I recommend that we match Dr. Lassiter's comment regarding the annual increase to reflect what we discussed on the water rates to be renewed, or to be reviewed annually.
That's in section two, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
And with, here I am causing trouble again, but should there be something in the sewer resolution about that the water, the sprinkler and pool systems do not pay that rate?
I think that's an appropriate suggestion. For, exactly. So I mean, that's the will of the council.
In order to do that, in order to do that, that homeowner has to put in separate meter.
Yes.
If it's a separate meter, yeah.
Or buy a house that's already got one.
Well, I think what she's saying is like, on Paige's personal situation, her water, her pool water and sprinkler water goes through her existing house meter, so we have, we have to charge
The sewer and trash.
Sewer based on, on the water rate.
Right.
So.
Right.
I think, what will?
And I chose to do that because at the time, I didn't want to go to the trouble to put in a meter for those other two items.
It's my understanding, our present practice is to, is to allow the property owner the option of putting in a separate meter, and if they elect to put in a separate meter, then it will be a change in prior practices that they're going to be built regularly and not once a year, but we would continue the current practice of having that, not having that water usage on that separate meter not included in sewer or solid waste billings. And to Dr. Lassiter's point, I think that language probably needs to be in both the water rate ordinance and in the sewer rate ordinance.
Yes, I agree.
In life with the water, we can look at this again because we will have two more readings of it.
Right.
Move, we table this till next month.
Thank you.
Okay. Jess, will you call the roll? Yes, ma'am. Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
I'd like to add one more thing about that that I forgot to say. The last time the sewer rates were increased was 2004. The time before that was 1990, and the time before that, there was literally no date on the document. It's that old. No. So just for clarification for the public. Okay. Next is, I mean, is the laser sensor discussion. This is document number 11. Everybody see it? There are, under scope of quotation, there are three items, single meter calibration service, a multi-meter calibration service, and a new laser level sensor and installation. Our engineering firm is says that what they think we should do is the new laser level sensor and installation. And the reason, as I understand it, I wish Charlie were here tonight, the reason as I understand it is because this laser will actually measure the true depth of the tributary and the water. The one that we have now gets literally moved by the water. And so it gets put in a position where it's not measuring the true depth, so that every time we discharge, we're out of compliance. And this thing is mounted above the water level, so high that the water can't reach it, and it's a laser measurement. That is the way I understand this.
And this is for the discharge pipe into the creek, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just curious, did we ever get an official response on the possibility of relocating the discharge point?
It probably wasn't in writing, but they said, don't do that, it's too expensive. Put in a new laser level sensor. I mean, it, we talked to them about that. We walked out there with them, showed them where exactly we were talking about. We did that with two or three different firms. And this is the recommendation that they've come back with. It's just one of many. We have a lot of work to do on our sewer ponds, but this is a relatively inexpensive part of what we're supposed to do to satisfy ADQ. And it, I believe, will give us more opportunity to discharge compliantly than we are presently, we just don't have the opportunity to discharge because our, it's never, it's never accurate. It never measures accurately, ever. And so our automated discharge arm can't operate correctly. It never operates correctly because it can't measure accurately.
Mayor, do we need all three of these components, or these three options?
These are three options. We just need, what McClellan wants us to do is the last one.
Okay.
Because the, because the other two are going to continue to give us calibration problems and measurement problems.
And this is going through McClellan as engineers and not the other one?
Right.
Okay.
This is their recommendation.
This is on the flow meters, right?
It's the, it's measuring the amount of flow in the creek, yes. And actually, the tributary, not the creek, but the tributary.
Did we just install new flow meters?
I don't think we installed new flow meters. We installed a automatic hydrographic control release on them.
But the sensor.
Work accurately because the sensor is supposed to tell it when to open, and the sensor is, is always inaccurate.
How many sensors do we have?
As far as I know, just one.
Okay.
Well, we have, we have one on the east side, but this is the only one on the west.
Well, yeah, but this is, we're talking about the west pond. I'm sorry, west pond. We have one on the west pond, one on the east pond.
But McClellan initiated this and recommends this, is that right?
And this is after Chid has been conversing with ADQ since we hired McClellan and waiting on our, waiting on them to get our CAOs done and all that. So he didn't want to tell us to go buy anything or do anything until he knew what they were going to require us to do. And they're going to require us to manage this in some sort, in some way. And this is his recommendation, the best way to manage that at the most inexpensive way we can do it.
This is just our agreement.
I'm sorry, we don't have this issue at the east pond?
Not generally. We do some, but not near as much as we do at the west pond. It's, it is, I mean, literally, we are, they're at the ponds every single day, draw samples, testing, and, and it is, it is a constant problem with the west pond. Anybody else?
I move we go with the laser option.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Jess, will you call the roll? Yes. Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
And Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that Mr. Pierre would like to amend the agenda.
And you're naming the fire center after Raymond W. Chisholm Fire Training Center.
You should have a resolution on that.
I second that amendment or a motion.
Sir, can, Mr. Barton, will you read that resolution, please?
A resolution to approve naming the Fire Training Center Raymond W. Chisholm Fire Training Center, whereas Raymond W. Chisholm served the City of Monticello for over 28 years and was the first full-time chief, and whereas through his leadership, the Training Center was planned, approved, and constructed utilizing members of the department to carry out a lot of the work and to save money for the city. And whereas the naming of the facility is an appropriate recognition of his tireless efforts and commitment he had for the City of Monticello and its fire department, now therefore be it resolved that the City hereby names the Raymond W. Center, the Raymond W. Chisholm Fire Training Center in recognition and honor of Chief Raymond W. Chisholm retired.
Okay. So, so we're going to vote on two things when we vote on this. We're going to vote on the fact that we amended the agenda to include this resolution, and then we'll include the resolution. Can we do that, Mr. Barton?
You may, as long as it's clear you're doing them both at the same time.
Okay.
And I think you just made it clear.
Okay. Y'all understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Is there any discussion or question? Can I get a motion?
Make the motion that we accept.
Second.
Okay. Jess, will you call the roll? Yes. Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Mayor.
Awesome. Yes, yes, sir.
Can I suggest that maybe Al and Dr. Lassiter worked together to get a nice-looking sign like they did for the Barbara Ashton Senior Center, for the, for the fire center? That was a very nice sign. Maybe work with fire chief on the design?
That'd be great. He, the fire chief has been, he's taken down the old sign, and he sanded it and painted it himself, and he's planning on using money out of the fire department's budget to re-letter it. But I think that that's a great idea, Mr. Meeks. Thank you very much. Will you two, do you mind doing that, Mr. Pierre and Mr. Lass, Dr. Lassiter?
It would be my honor.
Yeah, it'd be a pleasure to work with that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. I have some remarks I'd like to make. I'll keep them short, but first I want to know from Ashley, are there any public comments or questions that we need to address?
Not that I've seen. Give me one more second. Let me refresh again. I've been monitoring it as, as we go, and I haven't seen anything.
Okay.
Um. As we go, and I haven't seen? Uh, no, ma'am. I'm not, I'm not seeing any questions.
Okay. All right. And after my, after I say what I'm going to say, and I'm going to have to read a lot of it, sorry, I hate to look away from y'all, but I'm going to have to read some of it. You may have some questions that I'm happy to answer, so, but I hope I've written it in a way you can understand it. All right. COVID-19 has made a huge impact on all of our lives. Starting tomorrow, I have our Public Works crew split into two separate crews, working two eight-hour shifts. So you may see city employees working in the evenings. That's going to be normal until this COVID-19 issue's over with. And this is an effort to keep them and their families safe and healthy. This will affect commercial trash pickup. I don't think that it will affect residential trash pickup, but it may. If your trash doesn't get picked up when you think that it normally is picked up, just, just give us a little bit of time. We may be having to run that route in the evenings. We may be having to run that route in the evenings. And, and again, this is so that we can keep at least one or two healthy, uh, garbage truck drivers. City Hall is also changing hours to accommodate COVID-19. We're doing split shifts and, and split days around here. We're all going to continue to work 40 hours a week. Um, it just may be alternating days and times and that kind of thing. We've closed all the public restrooms to encourage distancing and shorter stays at our parks. Uh, we want you all to go outside. Just please stay six feet, at least six feet away from each other. And if, if, if you, if you see large gatherings of people that are not being uh, safe distances, please call the police department. We've instructed the police department to, to, uh, only discuss with them, um, the, the danger that they're in and that they're maybe creating for others. Um, we, we're, we want to be friendly about this. We just want to encourage everybody to be safe and, and stay at home as much as you can. I understand that we need to get outside. We need, I need some sunshine and some vitamin D myself. So, I get it, but I'm, I'm, I'm not going to the store. Uh, my kids are going, going to the store like once every two weeks. So, we need to do things like that that help not just ourselves, but each other. There will be a parking lot prayer vigil held at Drew Memorial Hospital this Friday at 6:45. Um, in order to go, and I hope that everyone does go and take part in that, you must stay in your car. Do not get out and mingle with everything, everybody else. Pull up in the parking lot. Um, hopefully, there will be people there to, um, direct you and help you get in a situation where you can join others who are praying for our hospital staff, um, our hospital administrator, and all the patients who are and will be treated there. And I, bless, oh, one more really important thing. Tomorrow is April 1st. That is April Fool's Day, but it is also Census Day. Um, please fill out your census. There are, there's $675 billion to be allocated dependent upon our population. If you have filled yours out, please ask an elderly neighbor, friend, family member, if they need help filling theirs out and help them get, get theirs done. Tomorrow's the big push that the feds want to happen, so let's try to, Drew County, do our part. Let's get 100% of our people to fill out their census. Redistricting happens because of our census. Um, all kinds of things happen because of our census, and I, and if you're, um, if you wonder about any of that, there is, I did a video on our, uh, Monticello heartbeat of Southeast Arkansas City Facebook page, which video, uh, was videoed by Ashley Foreman. She did a great job. I'm not sure I did such a great job, but it's me talking. And I filled out my census on video so that everybody could see what the questions were and that they're not overly personal. They don't ask about your social security number. They don't want to know. They don't, they don't want to know how much you spent for your house or what you make. It's very simple, takes very little time, and, um, Monticello and Drew County need, need you to do that. So, I'd ask that everybody, take a minute, think about the census, and fill that out tomorrow if you haven't done it already. PM. Joe Burgess just asked if the prayer vigil would be AM or PM, and I'm, and it's 6:45 PM. Anybody else have any questions or comments, or?
Paige, one quick one. I know I'm always talking. I want to give everybody on the council an A+ for the Zoom meeting we just completed, especially to Ashley for her patience and, uh, teaching of those of us that need to be taught. And Ashley, guess what? I discovered how I can call up all the documents while the meeting's going on, so I don't have to have this you on the screen.
Dr. Laster, I never doubted you, not for a moment, and I am, I'm so happy that this worked for everyone. Y'all did a great job, and thanks for being patient with me as we all learned how to do this. I think it went well.
Thank you, Ashley.
I too appreciate everybody's effort, and I, I hate it, but I have a feeling we're going to end up having April's meeting like this, too. Maybe, let's, I, I, my prayer is that we don't, but I got a feeling that we'll have to, so just hang in there, and maybe that'll be the last one.
Move to adjourn.
Thanks, Paige.
You're welcome. Thank y'all. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Joe, your job.
I think I got a motion and a second, so I think we're good.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
All right.
Bye.